This meeting rather of the Landale City Council to order, the Landale Cable Users Corporation, the Landale Housing Authority, as well as the Redevelopment Successor Agency to order. I'm going to ask the city clerk secretary to give us the roll call.
Mayor Pro Tim Reed. Pro Tim Osborne. Councilmember Suarez.
Here.
Councilmember Kearney. Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Mayor Pullen Miles.
Here.
All present.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Next item on our agenda is our ceremonial portion. We're going to have our flag salute by councilwoman Ms. Suarez, and I'm going to ask Pastor Bob DeBroski from the Way to God Church to lead us in a word of inspiration.
Please stand. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Let us pray. Lord, we give you thanks for being present at the council meeting today. We hope that all our fathers were appreciated on Father's Day. Lord, I know that you would like to be appreciated, and Lord, we give you thanks that we can appreciate one another and more than just once a year. We should not take others for granted. Thank them for being part of your life. And Lord, we give you thanks for the city councils, state, federal workers that don't get the recognition that they should or the appreciation. Today, we will be giving awards of appreciation, and we can never outdo it. In all God's people said.
Amen. Thank you Pastor DeBroski for those words. I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. The next item on our agenda is a presentation from the Landale Rotary Club for firefighter and deputy of the year, and that's going to be introduced by Superintendent Dr. Betty Hamilton.
Good evening. Thank you very much for allowing us to have this time. My name is Betsy Hamilton, here representing the Rotary Club of Landale, and I also wanted to introduce Sandra Horowitz, who's also with the Landale Rotary Club. I also just want to mention that I'm, as the superintendent of the school district, I am eternally grateful for the service of these gentlemen and many other officers and deputies and firefighters who have worked with our district and supported our students and families. So my first presentation will be for Deputy Paul Saldana. I don't know if he could come forward. I'm going to have you stand here and listen to what the wonderful things that have been said about you. After attending college at El Camino College and University of Southern California Institution of Architecture, Paul was hired by the El Camino Police Department where he served them for six years as a cadet, community service officer, and reserve police officer. While working for El Camino PD, Paul was often working alongside Landale deputies and saw the proactive police work and excellent community service they engaged in on a daily basis. Paul quickly realized the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department was a better fit for him. Paul applied and was hired by the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department as deputy sheriff. Paul was named as the honor recruit of his graduating academy class, earning top scores in academics, marksmanship, physical training, and leadership. Paul is currently a patrol deputy at South Los Angeles Station where he received the best patrol training in the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. Patrol training at the South Los Angeles Station was a huge challenge in his law enforcement career. Paul was proud to serve the community of South Los Angeles and Landale. Both of his parents were raised in Mexico and later came to the United States to create a better life for themselves and their children. Thanks to his loving parents, with the help of his brother and sister, dedication, motivation, and perseverance, Paul accomplished his dream to become a law enforcement officer for the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. On behalf of the Landale City Council, we'd like to congratulate and recognize Deputy Saldana on being selected this year's Rotary Club Deputy of the Year, serving the community Beautiful plaque that's presented on behalf of the city, and also this is a signed recognition certificate from our president and president-elect of the Landale Rotary Club. And I'll also give this to you so you can show off with your family to see what was said about you, and thank you so much for your service. Really, really appreciate it. Thank you. And next, it's my honor to share the 2019 firefighter of the year, Alex Rodriguez. Alex Rodriguez has worked with the Los Angeles County Fire Department since November 2006. Prior to that, he served as a volunteer firefighter for the city of La Habra Heights, emergency room technician at Long Beach Memorial, and EMT at Acormic Ambulance. Since the age of sixteen, he has volunteered with numerous community organizations. He has served as a youth mentor and camp counselor for the National Conference for Community Injustice, a volunteer CPR instructor for the American Red Cross, spent two years as an EMT instructor aide, volunteered at the Venice Family Clinic for low-income families, provided health education services and outreach to homeless youth in Los Angeles County, cycled twice from San Francisco to LA to raise money and awareness for HIV AIDS services and the firefighter cancer support network. As a member of the Los Angeles County Fire Department, he has spent five years on California Task Force Two Urban Search and Rescue Team and Swift Water Rescue Team. Off duty, he coaches both of his sons, Aiden and Jacob, in their soccer and baseball teams. He also serves as their Cub Scout, Dun Leader. The Landale City Council is pleased to congratulate and recognize Mr. Rodriguez as the 2019 Landale Rotary Club firefighter of the year. And also, you can keep the comments, and this is from the Rotary Club's president and incoming president, outgoing and incoming president. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Don't go too far. We'd like to take a picture with the firefighter and the deputy of the year of the city council. We want to thank you, Dr. Hamilton, for that presentation on behalf of the Landale Rotary Club and for recognizing these public servants who have served our community with honor and distinction, and congratulations to both of you, and we would like to take a picture. That's okay. That's good. (Applause).
Congratulations. They're shaking hands. You did one on the left. Ah, we need to go over there. Okay. I'll be looking after you. One, two, three. One more this way.
I think he said cheese. (Laughter). Yeah? (Laughter). Speech?
Okay, so we do have another presentation for two other individuals who have also served our community with honor. I'm going to put my glasses on because I want to make sure I see Commander April's expression as I read her information, because she's always smiling, always smiling, so it always brightens up the room. So we're going to, at this time, we're going to do a presentation for, the first one's going to be for Commander April Tardy for serving the city of Landale from October the third, 2016, to January thirteenth, 2019. I say commander because she was recently promoted to commander, the ranks of commander. Give her a round of applause. And so commander basically means she's over the whole enchilada under this area, the South Station. It's called South Station, right? South Los Angeles District Station, which includes the city of Landale. So April Tardy is a twenty-four-year veteran of the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, and she was promoted to the ranks of captain in October 2016 and assigned to the South Los Angeles Sheriff's Station. Serving the unincorporated areas of Athens, Lenox, Del Air, Wiseburn, El Camino Village, Manetta Gardens, and the city of Landale, the South Los Angeles Station provides law enforcement service to approximately 120,000 people, or residents. Captain Tardy's career with the Sheriff's Department began in 1994 after graduating from the Sheriff Training Academy as a deputy sheriff. She was assigned to the Civil Brand Institute for Women, the inmate reception center in the Temple Sheriff's Station. Captain Tardy believes in growing community and law enforcement relationships. As a commander, she will continue to build a safe environment for the citizens she served with the trust and support of her communities. Therefore, on behalf of the city of Landale, I would like to thank Commander Tardy for her leadership and service to the Landale as a captain and for her recent promotion as commander. And so, give her another round of applause. You get a chance to give your ten-minute speech in a minute. Captain John Burcher. Okay, very good. Also served the city of Landale from April 2017 to November 2018. John Burcher has over twenty-seven years serving with the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. You wouldn't be able to tell that because he looks so young, right? He was assigned to the Los Angeles Sheriff's Center in April 2017 as lieutenant. He served the unincorporated areas of Lenox, Athens, Del Air, Wiseburn, El Camino Village, Manetta Gardens, and the city of Landale. The South Los Angeles Station provides law enforcement service to approximately 120,000 people, or residents. Captain Tardy's career with the Sheriff's Department began in 1994 after graduating from the Sheriff Training Academy as a deputy sheriff. She was assigned to the Civil Brand Institute for Women, the inmate reception center in the Temple Sheriff's Station. Captain Tardy believes in growing community and law enforcement relationships. As a commander, she will continue to build a safe environment for the citizens she served with the trust and support of her communities. Therefore, on behalf of the city of Landale, I would like to thank Commander Tardy for her leadership and service to the Landale as a captain and for her recent promotion as commander. And so, give her another round of applause. You get a chance to give your ten-minute speech in a minute. Captain John Burcher. Okay, very good. Also served the city of Landale from April 2017 to November 2018. John Burcher has over twenty-seven years serving with the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. You wouldn't be able to tell that because he looks so young, right? He was assigned to the Los Angeles Sheriff's Center in April 2017 as lieutenant. He served the unincorporated areas of Lenox, Athens, Del Air, Wiseburn, El Camino Village, Manetta Gardens, and the city of Landale. Captain Burcher's career has included him working at the stations in Carson, Lamita, Lakewood, South Los Angeles, and East Los Angeles prior to serving as lieutenant in Landale. He has also served as in the administrative office. So on behalf of the city of Landale for his excellent service, we would like to thank Captain Burcher for his service to the city of Landale as our lieutenant, as well as congratulate him as well for being promoted to captain. Give him a round of applause. So there you have, we have a commander and we have a captain. So when you, the moral of the story is after you serve the city of Landale, right, you get promoted, right? So let that be a lesson to all those who are in waiting to be promoted. You know, if you come to Landale, you'll be promoted to either a captain or a commander. So we want to say congratulations to both of you guys, and we would love to take a picture and have you give a few words. Come on down. Well, go ahead and say your ten-minute speech first, and then we'll come down, right?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff, and of course, my Landale residents. I want to thank you for a wonderful two and a half years here in the city of Landale. You know, I've worked a lot of different cities and over my twenty-four, twenty-five years, but I've never had a city council that was so passionate and supportive as all of you. And I want to thank you all for your support, your love, your passion, and even our residents. They don't come to us with just problems, they come to us with solutions. So I want to thank all of you for your time and thank you for trusting us and supporting us in our efforts, and sometimes it's difficult, but with you all here, it makes it a lot easier for us. So thank you very much.
Captain Burcher.
Thank you, and I want to thank you too for the opportunity to serve you guys. This truly has been the pinnacle of my career, the year and a half that I worked here, serving you guys, your concern for the community. And I've told many residents, some of them don't believe it, but I stand by it, you guys look or contemplate every single concern that's brought before the board. And whether or not they see the effects immediately, you guys are always looking for solutions to these, and I've just been very impressed to be part of this, so and blessed to be part of your guys' team. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. Congratulations.
(Applause).
I thought you were going to ask. Oh. (Laughter). I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I was going to say, I'm going to have a... I might not get it back. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. I'm here tonight to present the public safety report from June third to June sixteenth, excuse me. Back on April sixth, at approximately six PM, two juveniles were walking near the intersection of 169th Street and Freeman Avenue. A vehicle approached them and stopped. The driver pointed handgun at them, demanding their cell phones. Both victims immediately complied and threw their cell phones into the suspect vehicle. At this point, the vehicle drove off out of view. On June sixth, after an extensive investigation, Detective Malnato arrested the driver of the vehicle. He was later positively identified by both victims as a person who had pointed the gun at them and stolen their phones. The suspect was booked at South Los Angeles Station for armed robbery. On June eighth, at nine PM, deputies responded to the 4700 block of 147th Street regarding a check of the vicinity call. The informant, a security officer, told deputies a male had approached him while holding two knives with blood on, with holding two knives with blood on his hands, stating that somebody had killed his wife. He then ran back into an apartment with another male. Deputies conducted call-outs for both males to exit the apartment. The first male who had contacted the security officer stepped out. He also had blood on his face and shirt. The other male then stepped out. He also had blood on himself. Both were detained pending an assault investigation. While conducting a protective sweep of the apartment, deputies observed bloodstains on the doors and walls, including a blood trail leading into the bedroom. They discovered numerous firearms in plain view. It was later determined the first male had assaulted the second male. The victim was transported to ECLA Harbor General Hospital in stable condition. The suspect was placed under arrest. All weapons were secured and transported with the suspect to South Los Angeles Station. The suspect was booked for assault with a daily weapon. On June eleventh in the morning, Deputy Tony Lomitico conducted a traffic stop at the 149th Street and Avis Avenue. As he contacted the driver, he could smell a strong odor of marijuana emitting from inside the vehicle. The driver stated he had more marijuana inside his vehicle. Deputy Lomitico detained the driver regarding a marijuana investigation. During a search of the driver, Deputy Lomitico recovered three Ziploc baggies which appeared to be methamphetamine. While searching the suspect's vehicle, he recovered, he also recovered a loaded handgun. The handgun was not registered. Based on above, the driver was placed under arrest and transported to South Los Angeles Station. He was booked for possession of a controlled substance while armed, possession of firearm not registered to self, and possession of a controlled substance, methamphetamine. And that concludes my report, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions for you.
Okay, thank you for the report, Captain. Are there any questions on the captain's report? No questions?
I do have one, just a quick one.
Yes, sir.
You know, in years past, if somebody would stop loading firearms, drug possession, as you just stated, how would the laws change on something that, I mean, you may not be aware of, but if you are, I'm curious.
No, in regards to that, those laws haven't changed. I mean, if you have drugs and a loaded firearm...
Still felony, and so they would still serve...
Yeah, that hasn't changed.
...the assigned time by the judge.
Correct, yes.
That's good to know. Thanks.
Yeah, definitely. Anybody else?
Okay, thank you for your report, Captain. Okay. Next item, is there any items from the city clerk's department?
We have just one item this evening. On behalf of the city clerk's office, I am pleased tonight to let you all know that tonight's meeting is being livestreamed and archived on YouTube. Please visit the Landale City TV YouTube channel to watch current city council meetings as well as other videos of city events and news. Don't forget to like and subscribe. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. We are now at oral communications. Oral communications, where you have the opportunity to speak to this body, be it either the Landale City Council, the Landale Cable Users Corporation, the Landale Housing Authority, or the Redevelopment Successor Agency. If you would like to speak to either one of those bodies, we ask that you line up by the flag. When it becomes your turn, if you come to the podium, approach the podium, if you will start with your name. At about two minutes, the amber light would come on, and that would be the signal to start wrapping things up. Once again, you can speak on any one of these agencies, the city council, the cable usage, the Landale Housing, I mean, excuse me, the Landale Housing Authority, or the Redevelopment Successor Agency. Let's have our first speaker.
Good evening. My name is Charles Rundle, I live on Mansell Avenue. I have three status questions here. The first one is about the left turn light study on Manhattan and Hawthorne Boulevard, east and westbound. Is anything coming of that? And the second one is the vacant lot there on the corner of Hawthorne and Manhattan. They took the police sign down. Has anything been settled on that? And the third one is the thorn in the side of everybody that drives in the city. What is happening to our roads? You drive down any street, there are so many potholes and rough spots, the blacktop, now it's starting to look pretty shabby. I mean, pick a street, drive down, and I guarantee you can hit a pothole before you get to the end of the block, okay? That's it.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Randall Abraham, West 171st Street. First of all, congratulations to the city clerk's office and staff for getting us live on YouTube, increasing the city's transparency. on YouTube, increasing the city's transparency, thank you. My attendance at City Council meetings since 2012 was originally driven by my concerns from the barrage of illegal fireworks around the fourth. After years of suggestions made by myself and other residents that were ignored by the City Council, it was working directly with the Sheriff's Department and at first with Lieutenant Hawking, now Captain Hawking, that produced the most significant results. 2017 was the first time in over five years our street was free of obstruction and not blanketed by the toxic fumes of earlier years. What worked was a proactive approach by the Sheriff's Department. Prior to that fourth, to the fourth that year and previous years, flyers were distributed in my neighborhood for anyone who failed to read their Longdalian. Lieutenant Burcher, now a captain, then followed up with visits to the compiled list of egregious offenders that we provided to him. I believe that this visit was the most effective tool because it puts these individuals on notice. Crime happens because offenders believe they are undercover and protected by the citizens or their neighbors. This cannot be the case. This illegal use is a criminal offense and endangers lives. On the night of July 4th, undercover police vehicles were successfully utilized to creep up on unsuspecting lawbreakers. The city has seen an increased number of citations issued over the years so that lawbreakers know there are repercussions to these criminal acts. Although 2017 was one of marked improvement, 2018 we experienced a backslide and a lack of enforcement in our area. Illegal mores were still being ignited all around us, and we did not see a single patrol car in the street without, throughout the evening. Fortunately, our immediate section of West 171st Street was free of illegal fireworks being blasted in the middle of the street, but they were dangerously all around us. This year, we have a new captain and a new lieutenant assigned to Longdale. Hopefully, they will follow the same approaches that Captain Burcher and Commander Tardy took that were successful in combating illegal fireworks. Fortunately, Sergeant Nitz, who worked many of the July 4th holidays, is still part of the team. I would like to thank these three, along with Captain Hawking, for their past efforts, and for all the officers who will be working this July 4th. Hopefully, Longdale will learn from the city of Gardena, who once again is still banning all fireworks, including the Safe and Sane. They saw a reduction in illegal fireworks from the Sea Fireworks show received better attendance than the previous year. The nonprofits in Gardena have managed to survive with less destructive fundraisers than selling fireworks. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Pam, Longdale resident. I'd like to say that I visited an open house this week, well, this past weekend. Nice house. People have purchased the home, they've done lots of upgrades, it really looked good. So, the thing is, when you walk outside the house and you look around and you see weeds to your knees, it's kind of depressing because that is going to hurt their ability to sell their home. I do not understand why I am asking too much, and why I have an expectation that is way too high, that people mow their lawns and do some weed abatement in their parkways. And my God, when you look across the street and you see the crumbling fence, parts of it are on the ground. I mean, it is a broken fence, it's just gorgeous, really. I would be so bummed if I were selling my house and then that's what potential buyers came and saw, because it is hurting the home values in this city. And I don't care when you bought your house, and I don't care how much your house has appraised for now, the fact is, it could be better. And certainly, weeds to your knees is not unreasonable for me to ask that you have to cut them. Really, it's not. I see along Condon Avenue, these little signs, be a good neighbor and pick up after your animal. We need those all over the city, but be a good neighbor and mow your weeds, cut your weeds, wow, good neighbor, yay. Same with those fireworks signs about illegal fireworks. Why are they not blanketing the city? Why are they not everywhere throughout the city? I realize it might cost a little bit of money, but, you know, sometimes it costs a little money. But enforcement of mowing the grass, that just is not asking too much. I'm sorry, it's not. And thank you to the Sheriff's Department for all that they have done repeatedly for all these years with regard to the illegal fireworks, and hopefully, really, hopefully y'all will learn something from Gardena, because, I'm sorry, bake sales, hot dogs, pancake breakfast, there are ways to raise funds, because let's face it, not all money that comes from the sale of fireworks goes back to the youth of this city, since that is what y'all keep telling me, that we need the fireworks sales for is the youth, the children. Well, you know, hey, those children can get out there and do something to help raise funds, too. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, with that, we will close the public communications, oral communications, for all of the said agencies, and bring it up to the diocese for any comments from the council or board members. Let's start with Councilmember Reed.
Good evening, and thank you, everybody, for that spoke, I appreciate that. Just wanted to talk briefly on the city streets. We do have a schedule of rotation through, realize there are some potholes in some places, definitely want to get those to Public Works, and I think proactively, I see them filling some, they may have been called, but I've seen them proactive as well. I know we've got three new streets that are already scheduled coming up that we just approved in the last meeting, and we'll continue processing through. You know, it's never, you never get enough, let's put it that way. I will pass it on.
Okay, Councilmember Pat Kearney.
Thank you, Robert. I want to also thank you for every spoke tonight, maybe the city manager, and to speak on the vacant lot and the left turn lane on Hawthorne Boulevard.
Yes, both of those are in process. Actually, we sold the property on Manhattan Beach Boulevard and Hawthorne several months ago.
Yes.
The developer is working on that right now, mitigating the property, and it's in his hands, he'll be developing it. The plans for the Hawthorne Boulevard, Manhattan Beach turn lanes are under review right now by our Public Works Department, and our roads are in a constant rotation of repair. In fact, we have an item on tonight's agenda for quite a few streets for a total of one and a half million dollars. And if there are potholes, please call them in, because we don't get out there on every street, so if there's an issue, please tell us and we'll fix it.
And then also about the fireworks.
973-3200.
973-3200. Steve Mandoki.
Mandoki.
Press one.
And then also the fireworks, are we on board with the new captain lieutenant, Michael and Steve and whomever?
Yeah, I believe Mike, we've been talking to the Sheriff's Department, and we fund additional safety every Fourth of July, the City Council's been doing that for several years now, and we'll have them out again this year.
And that blankets the whole city, not one quadrant?
That's correct, it is the whole city, and they do the best they can, because it's all over, we know that.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Suarez.
Wanted to thank everybody that came out tonight, and for those of you who spoke. I did have one question regarding the road repairs. Are we seeing any delay with the passage of SB 1 and the way it's working out?
Not yet.
Not yet?
Not yet.
Okay, so this will be the first batch of?
That's correct. In fact, tonight's agenda item, I think you're referencing, does have SB 1 funding attached. There's a number of funding sources that we utilize every year to repair our streets.
Thank you. And then I also had another question regarding the fireworks. We usually do some type of report ahead of time to kind of talk about how we're going to deal with the fireworks. I know we have a lot of new people on board, so maybe next year we can look at that. And then also, if, I'm hoping that they use the undercover patrols again, because that seemed to work out pretty well. And that's all I had. I'll pass it along, thank you.
Kind of piggyback on that real quickly, we will have some information on the website very quickly, we'll have the message board out again, and we do have signs up throughout the city saying no illegal fireworks at any time, so, and that's every year.
Mayor Protona Osborne.
Thank you, Robert. Yeah, you guys covered pretty much everything, but Robert and I just made mention after one of the speakers that Gardena, even though they banned it, they were sued and they lost, and now it's for sale again in Gardena, so, as we understand it.
Yeah.
Check.
Okay, just, okay, all right, all right. Okay, that's all you have?
Yeah, that's all we got.
Ms. Lundey, I want to thank you for bringing to our attention the weeds to your knees. Yes, we do encourage people to maintain not only the weeds in their yards, but also the weeds in the parkway, and just remind people that the parkway is their responsibility as well to maintain. So, yes, we would encourage them to abate the weeds, so that, you know, it won't have adverse effect on the community, particularly on property that's for sale, so thank you for bringing that to our attention. I'm curious as to know about the fireworks signs that Ms. Lundey brought up. I know we have them along the railroad track. Do we have them throughout?
They're throughout the city. I don't have the inventory, but I know Public Works does have that. In fact, we ordered additional signs last year, and they've been posted. They were done earlier this year, actually.
Okay, okay, thank you for that update. I was gonna, you kind of touched on, I was gonna just ask for a quick update, like on the pothole and street repairs, notwithstanding SB 1 funding, which was the gasoline increase on funding, which would be used for infrastructure and projects such as road repair. Notwithstanding that, our city, although we, you know, we do have potholes, and, you know, we can't deny there's a pothole there, or alligator crack here and there, but as a whole, our city, we do actually pretty well, and we have a pretty robust capital improvement project that we have been undergoing for the last few years. I'm not going to name any cities, but there's a couple of cities here in the South Bay that's pretty known for having, you know, some rough streets, and their budget is much larger than the city of Longdale, so what we?
Talking about Torrance?
No, it's not, it's not Torrance, but I'm not going to say any names. But we do, our staff does a great job with the budget that we do have, and with the infusion of the SB 1 funding, we'll get around to doing even more Public Works projects, like such as what's on the agenda today, but I want to thank you for bringing that to our attention.
We're still getting Measure R.
Yeah, and we also get to measure our funding, which we can use for road repair as well. Piggybacking real quick on the Manhattan Beach property, I don't want to just gloss over that, yes, that's, we did sell the Manhattan Beach property, and it's for sale in escrow. Have it closed escrow yet? It's closed escrow.
Yeah, yes, Mr. Mayor, it's closed.
Okay, thank you. So we're moving that project along, and I wanted to highlight that because, although it doesn't seem like something is happening because we took a sign down and, you know, the next month there's not a building there and, you know, robust taxes being, you know, generated. But, I know, I'm just being facetious, kind of, you know, moving it along. But we are working on it, and that was, what, maybe like a twenty year in the making, and so to have escrow actually closed, you know, on the property, we feel pretty good about, you know, the pace of the project. So stand by for news. We'll keep the residents abreast as to what's gonna happen there, but it's looking pretty good, though. We'll, we don't know for certain, but we do know that we're moving forward, and we do know that we could close escrow, and we have some ideals, but as to what probably would go there, but we will know as we get closer. The question was asked, what's gonna go there, for those who, who did, as long as it's not a rock and brew, as someone said in the audience. Okay, so that's all I will have under public comments. I want to thank everyone who came out and spoke tonight. We will move our agenda. We're now on the consent calendar, which is item H. What is the, what is the pleasure of the consent calendar?
If there's also-
Go ahead.
I was gonna say I'll move approval if there's no questions.
Okay, so.
I just have a comment. I wanted to thank staff for bringing to our attention Assembly Bill one six nine four and the support for it, and hopefully that does pass so that we will have funds possibly for more parking, I mean, more parks. Thank you.
Okay, very good, thank you. Without any further discussion, unless there are further discussion, there's a motion on the floor by Osborne and seconded by Mr. Pat Kearney. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none with the council, please vote on the consent calendar.
What about me?
It's yours.
It's working?
It's working, I'm not working.
Hit it hard. Dig with your hammer.
Motion approved unanimously.
Okay, thank you, madam. Okay, then we do it for the consent calendar. The, okay, the next item on the agenda is item eighteen.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember.
Administration, thank you.
This is the approval of plans and specifications for our eighteen nineteen annual street improvements and authorization from the council of staff to authorize the bidding of said projects. As you recall, in April of this, of twenty eighteen, we approved and adopted a resolution with a list of streets as listed below on the staff report on page eighteen of the agenda. They include Grevilla Avenue, alleyways in the east of Hawthorne Boulevard, Hundred and Sixtieth Street, One Sixty-seventh Street, One Forty-ninth Street, and these projects are detailed in the report. The budget for these items total one point five million dollars in the coming fiscal year. They are included in the capital improvement plan that we have presented to you. The funding sources as referenced earlier include Measure R, Prop C, Metro Moneys, SB one, gas tax, block grant funds, as well as some general fund dollars. The recommendation to you this evening from staff is a variety of items. The first is to adopt the plans and specifications and to approve the project scope of work and authorize staff to advertise these projects. Two, to authorize staff to allocate sixty-nine thousand six hundred and thirty-four dollars from the general fund for the Hawthorne Boulevard reconditioning of One Sixty-third Street to One Sixty-eighth Street. To authorize and allocate seventy-one thousand six hundred dollars from the general fund for road maintenance for the alleyways. To authorize another sixty thousand dollars from the general fund for the Jane Addams parking lot improvement. To authorize twenty percent contingency for the Grevilla Avenue project, as well as a twenty percent contingency for the road maintenance projects. That is staff's report. If you have any questions, please, available for other questions, but with that, we'll be able to move forward with our twenty, our nineteen twenty work.
Thank you for that report. I anticipate a question for Mr. Pat Kearney.
The Jane Addams parking lot, that money is being moved?
No, it's being authorized now.
I'll fight you to the tooth and nail that parking lot. I don't think we should waste our taxpayers' money on a school parking lot.
If council wishes to not fund that, then we will not do that at this time.
I think it's brought up twice now.
It has, and you've given us direction to work with the neighboring church. They've not wanted to participate. Our agreement with the school for the park use is to maintain the area. We have been patching out there. If the council wishes to pursue the full repairs, this is, this agenda item would allow us to do that, but if you wish to delay it, we could do that also.
Well, I must tell you, I'm firmly against doing that parking lot.
I guess my, my, please, no hissing and booing and clapping. Thank you, ma'am. Yeah, I also had that down as a point of information with the parking lot. It seemed like we discussed this before.
We have.
And I guess I have the same line of question with Councilmember Kearney as to whether or not it's, you know, within the scope of the city. I know we're using it obviously for, for our purposes, for a park, but for repairing the lot, especially if we are bearing a hundred percent of the cost, which would seem like it. It seems as if that shouldn't be the case. I mean, I'm not necessarily opposed to fund it in some part because we are using it and we do get a benefit from it. My only question would be why are we shelling out a hundred percent of the cost rather than-
And the school district got some kind of proportion.
A third between the church, the school, and us. And I know the church said, okay, we'll kick in, well, I forget, under five thousand dollars, but we want to use a parking lot more, is that? And the ballpark is what the conversation was?
Well, I think what the church is, at least for me, is incidental use, which is, I'm not too disturbed by that, but I would be disturbed if the school board.
Given the comments, I would suggest you remove this from the approval tonight and we can come back at a future date. I can initiate a discussion with the school district and see if they are willing to entertain some cost sharing in this, and we can bring that back at a future date.
And at the same time, you know, just to follow up on that, I know we have talked about this once before, and we actually had this in a contract where the city was due to handle that maintenance. So, and I'd agree with pulling it, checking that item again and talking about it, but I specifically remember us looking, that contract had us responsible for the maintenance. You know, and, you know, you could run with the church with, as in a couple of other places where the school district and the church alternate parking lots. You know, that would make a little bit more sense. You get more wear and tear in both places, but I do recall that specific detail. So, yeah, I agree. Let's pull it and work on it.
I have a question too, Robert. Have we looked at just like a simple slurry going on?
We have already done that, got it there and patched and done some slurry. We did that last September before the music festival, actually.
And what would be the cost to do it again versus the full?
I don't know the full cost. I have to check with Public Works. It's assuming it would be a lot cheaper. It's just a matter of the-
It's not as permanent, I understand.
The ultimate would be to replace it, I mean, repair it, but we can look at that, we can look at another interim and give you an update on that, too. Sure, absolutely.
Councilwoman Swirrs.
And then I just wanted to piggyback off of Councilmember Reed's comment. I was too under that impression, and so I'm wondering if we could check what our obligation is versus what we're doing extra.
Okay.
You know, at the same point, we need to also look at the fact, you know, the sidewalk along there, especially on the north side of that parking lot, that curb is raised up. There's almost a one-foot drop in some places, so this is a heavy-duty project, not just a short repave.
Total repair. Okay, thank you for those comments. Just a quick question. I don't see it on the schedule. Condemn along the railroad tracks, do we have that on a particular schedule or?
That's not in the current approval. I can check to see where that is. I know we've been doing some work out on condemn, especially at the south end where we had fixed some of the asphalt that had been raised by the tree roots.
Right.
But I, that's not in this report, but I will get an update to you, a memo regarding the condemn.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you for that. Is there any more discussion on this item? Item number eighteen. Seeing none, what is the pleasure of this body concerning item number eighteen?
I'd make a motion to approve as amended.
With the exception of pulling out the sixty thousand dollars.
That's the amended.
So we'll do that.
That can be part of the motion.
Okay, so the motion's been made by Reed that we approve this as amended and seconded by Mr. Pat Kearney. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none with the council, please vote.
Motion approved unanimously.
Okay, thank you, madam. Next item on our agenda is item number twenty is our annual municipal budget for-
We have the Longdale Beat-
Nineteen, nineteen, there you go. There you go, thank you, Mr. Mayor Protim. Longdale Beat Fixed Route Transportation Agreement.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I was gonna give a brief staff report, and Mr. Estes is available if there's any other questions about the report. But before you tonight is a contract with MV Transportation. They've been our transportation provider for the Longdale Beat for the last five years. We solicited four proposals, and MV Transportation was the lowest responsible bidder. They have provided good services to the city. We have practically no complaints about the service, and so our recommendation to you tonight is to fund and approve a contract for a three-year agreement with the city and MV Transportation in the amount of one million four hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. The funding for this does come from Proposition A and no general fund use. That's the recommendation. If you have questions, Mr. Estes is available for questions as well as myself.
Okay, are there any questions on item nineteen? There might be someone who wants to speak on this item. Is there anyone wishing to speak on item number nineteen concerning the fixed route?
Good evening, all of you, Mayor, City Councilmembers and staff. My name is Brett Bohm of Transportation Concepts and the Director of Operations for the company. I have just a few questions or maybe just comments for clarity on the award and recommendation by staff. The RFP calls for, this is regarding the vehicles, the RFP calls for twenty eighteen vehicles or later, and I see in the staff report that the current MV has proposed using their current fleet. Now, the question is, does that fall within the requirement on the RFP of twenty eighteen or newer vehicles? Then also on the evaluation criteria, we all measured on the vehicles that we were proposing, and all four proposers were given four points for it, which is good. But again, we as Transportation Concepts proposed brand-new vehicles, wherein the, in the evaluation criteria, it says that MV is going to be using their current vehicles. So again, how are they able to get four points where, you know, with used vehicles or not brand-new vehicles like we have? And so that could have, you know, added different pointing system for Transportation Concepts. The other thing is, we're looking at costing. I mean, obviously, our costing is based on supplying brand-new vehicles, and if we were able to, you know, supply older vehicles, our pricing would have been a little bit different. So I just wanted to bring that to the attention and see if we can get some clarification on those two points. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that comment. Who can shed some light on the question that was raised regarding the-
There I would defer to Mr. Estes. I know he reviewed that, and there were, I believe he discussed, he had told me about the vehicle issue previously.
Yes, MV Transportation is proposing using older vehicles, wherever the transmissions have been rebuilt. The engine has been rebuilt within the last year, and they're essentially, except for the exterior of the vehicles, they're essentially brand-new vehicles.
So when we say brand-new, essentially brand-new vehicles, does that mean brand-new for emission standards are concerned?
Yes, I think with a rebuilt transmission and engines recently rebuilt, I think so, yes.
So that, so that requirement, I would assume, because we want to address, you know, lowering our, you know, our emissions, and so if you have a brand-new engine that's rebuilt that can satisfy those emission standards, whether the unit itself is brand-new, but the engine is brand-new, it would seem to suggest that that will meet those standards? Is that the rationale?
Yes. And the speaker is correct, two thousand eighteen vehicles or newer were requested during the RFP, but like I said, the transmissions have been rebuilt in all three vehicles, and also the engines have been rebuilt also very recently.
So let me ask the city attorney, if it specified a certain vehicle year or newer, but you have an older vehicle that's being, you know, refurbished, you know, whatever unit meets those emission standards, is that still within the guidelines of the request for proposal?
Well, this is a request for proposal, not a bid situation, so there is some flexibility in what we allow.
Okay, yeah. So unlike a bid where you have to bid specifically based on the specifications of, you know, of the bid proposal, this is a request for proposal, which could vary or what have you, obviously, as long as you're within the spirit of what our objectives happen to be. Okay, get that. Is there, is there any questions on?
There's no questions. I'll make a move, a motion to approve staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made by Osborne that we approve the staff recommendation and seconded by Councilmember, um, it's not Reed, but-
Whoever he is.
Kearney.
Brent Swirrs.
Councilmember Pat Kearney seconded the motion.
The guy between the two.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, with the council.
Motion approved unanimously.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Now, the next item is item number twenty, annual municipal budget for fiscal year twenty nineteen for the redevelopment accessory agency, the city council, the Longdale Housing Authority, and the Longdale Cable Usage Corporation.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, those are the budgets being presented to you tonight for adoption. As you know, on June third, we held our annual budget workshop. We had an extensive presentation with a lot of detail about our operating budgets for the coming fiscal year. There was some direction from the council that night, which was based on a few reviews, and based on the review, we have removed twenty-one hundred dollars for the drone that was being proposed. We've eliminated the two thousand dollar expenditure for the Christmas with the cop program, and we have reduced our block grant funding by six thousand six hundred dollars due to the actual amount we're going to receive in the coming fiscal year. With that, we have a budget that is balanced being presented tonight. Again, those are the only changes made. Everything else is as you saw and was presented to you on June third, and the recommendation is that you adopt Resolution CC one nine zero six dash zero three three, a resolution of the city council adopting the annual budget for nineteen twenty. That concludes staff report, and the finance director is here. If you have any other questions.
Okay, thank you for that report. Are there any discussions on the budget? We did have a pretty robust discussion at the last council meeting. I want to thank once again the finance department for putting together this budget, and all the department heads for working with the finance department on this annual budget. As you can see, if we do adopt this tonight, we have not only a sound budget, a balanced budget, but a healthy and responsible budget, complete with a healthy reserve, and that's due to the hard work of our, of all of our employees, and I just want to thank them for all that they put into on this budget process for the betterment improvement of our community. With that, unless there's anything else, I'll attain a motion.
I'll make a motion, accept.
Okay, you, you make the motion, you accept my motion?
Oh, you made the motion?
I just entertained the motion, so you make the motion.
You said it entertained means-
So the motion's been made by Pat Kearney. The motion's been made by Mr. Pat Kearney that we accept the budget and seconded by Mr. James Osborne. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none with the council, please vote on the budget.
Budget some hearing aids.
Motion approved unanimously.
All righty, thank you, madam. Okay, next item is items from mayor and city council members. Any reports, any attendance, any meetings, had any, any meals that you want to report? Let's do that this time. Let's start with councilmember Dan.
All right, very good. Yeah, so I had two meetings. It is a subcommittee meeting that we attended this past week, and the health, safety, and pet fair, which was well-attended, aside from the tripping on that curb. You know, it was a good time. It was a good time, you know. A lot of people came out, a lot of fun was had, a lot of new animals out there that I have not seen. Kids were excited. Wish everyone a happy Fourth of July. I won't talk to them again before then.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Pat Kearney, councilman.
I attended three. I attended with Councilmember Reed the sub-subcommittee for the waste toddlers contract, which we'll be doing, Councilmember Reed and I were doing this on the nineteenth, Wednesday this week. I also attended the health, safety, and pet fair, and I think staff did a fantastic job out there again. I'm sorry I didn't see Dan trip, but it might have been funny.
Yeah, I didn't see that.
And then I also attended the lobby trust and oversight committee with city manager Steve Mandoki, and next month I am going to ask the committee, oversight and trust, that if we stop getting all these accidents from, no offense to you deputies and captain, but knuckleheads out there that are doing stupid things, that we ask for our credit back on our contract in the sheriff's department. With that, I'll pass it on.
Very good. Councilwoman Swirrs.
Thank you. I also attended the health, safety, and pet fair, and there were a lot of cool new animals there and reptiles walking around there, pretty big ones, too. So it was pretty fun to see all the, all the extra things that staff put in. I want to thank them and everybody that attended. I also attended the League of California Cities LA Division meeting, and so with that, I'll pass it along.
Mayor Protim Osborne.
You guys covered it. Health and safety fair is always great every year. It seemed like there was more critters this year than last year. Was it my imagination? You think so? No, it's fun. Kids have a good time. Kudos to staff.
Very good. Yeah, yeah, I would also like to congratulate staff on a great pet and health and safety fair. It was well-attended. It seemed like the dogs and the two cats that I met was, I'm very happy. Some of them was a little disturbed because they wasn't sure what they were there for, you know. I got one cat that's good enough. So that was good for the staff. I want to thank the staff once again for putting that fair on. I, too, attended the League of Cities California Divisions meeting as well, and councilwoman Swirrs and I also attended the technology and social media subcommittee where we talked about all things technology and social media related. And that's pretty much it for me. So with that, we're gonna close, I mean, comments from the council and the mayor, and we're gonna move our agenda to our closed session. We have a few closed sessions, one, two, three, four, four closed sessions tonight, including one from the Longdale Housing Authority. So I'm gonna ask the city attorney to give us provision of the closed session for which we would go under.
The city council meeting closed session on three items. The first is to confer with its labor negotiator. The second is regarding anticipative litigation. The third is a public employee performance evaluation, and the fourth item, which as the mayor said is for the housing authority, is to confer with the real property negotiator. These are all as agendized as case twenty-two through twenty-five. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll extend recess to closed session. Congratulations.
Thank you. ...at one four four one zero and one four four one two Manziel Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Okay, we are ready to adjourn. The regular meeting of the Longdale City Council, scheduled to be held on July the first, was canceled by order of the city council on May the twentieth. Therefore, the next regular scheduled meeting of the Longdale City Council will be held at six thirty PM Monday, July fifteenth. And we want to wish everyone a happy Fourth of July, and we will convene the next council meeting in the next chamber. We are adjourned.